A hard time to wind after that?
Oh, yeah, you're not going to bed anytime soon.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Northampton Township Board of Supervisors meeting. It is Wednesday, December 11th, 2024. I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. Let's think of our loved ones this holiday season as we consider our moment of silence.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, well, we have an action-packed evening tonight, but I'd like to just start out with a quick announcement. One correction we want to make in under consent items for approval of the minutes, we have a typo. That should be November 14th and December, oh, and November 20th, not December. So we're just making that correction. That should be pretty straightforward. So let me start out by mentioning that there's two opportunities for public comment this evening. The first opportunity, it will be after our special presentations, and that public comment is limited to agenda items only. If you'd like to speak about an agenda item, please sign in the back on the sheet, and we'll make sure that you get recognized and your comments will be heard. If you're one of the presenters, there's no need to sign up on the sheet. You're automatically included in your, in the commenting, of course. The second opportunity is at the end of the meeting, we have a public comment, which is an open, oh, how about that, which is an open comment, and I'll again ask you to sign on the sheet in the back. I'll call your name, recognize you to the microphone, and you can make your comments. We like to keep public comments to around three minutes, if possible. So we have a special presentation tonight. I'd like to call the chairman of our Northampton Day Committee, Mr. Steve Brier, up, and he is here to give us a report on the Northampton Day activities, as well as, he's got some donations that he's going to talk about tonight. Hi, Steve.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see everybody tonight, and I'll try and be as brief as I can because I know you have a very busy schedule. So, Northampton Day 2024 was the best event we've had so far. Weather was perfect, had more tenants than we ever had before. We had over 120 vendors, a dozen food vendors, great talent show, raffle baskets, entertainment for all ages. Giant Pharmacy came, gave out free COVID and flu shots at the event. We gave out 44 shots to people right there. We're fortunate to be blessed with a wonderful group of corporate sponsors who without, who without their generosity, we wouldn't be able to do any of this. And we are also very excited and very grateful for the support that we get from the Northampton community, everybody who lives in Northampton Township. I can't, I can't, I can't forget to talk about the Northampton Public Works Department, the police, the fire, Tri-Hampton Rescue, who were there all day long. And, you know, we're not part of the township. We're part of the township, but not part of Township Administration. So to get the kind of help that we get from all the first responders and the public works people is, we couldn't do it without these people. Now, in addition to throwing a great party, we're proud that excess funds this year were donated to local nonprofits. We're very grateful this year to be able to make gifts to several local groups, and we'll introduce them and not take too much of your time, okay? We give out two five, we give out two scholarships to graduating seniors of high school who will volunteer to our event every year. We presented previously checks to the seven Northampton Township Council Rock schools, PTOs, so each PTO got a $500 check. Northampton Indians Football and Cheerleading sent four teams to Nationals this year, and we gave them a check to help to freight a cost for their parents. And then we have three large checks that we'll be giving out tonight. And what I'd like to do is to call Pete, Pete Palestine, will, a board member, a fellow board member, will read a short overview of autism cares.
Good evening. The following is the, is from the Autism Cares Foundation's mission statement. Since its inception, Autism Cares Foundation has focused on providing and expanding resources for people with disabilities. ACF's goal is to support people to experience all that life has to offer. Their activities, nearly 200 in a typical year, are viewed as a necessity by parents, care providers, and our participants to encourage social interactions and friendships. Our Adult Services Division provides services to individuals 21 years old and over. These offerings include daycare programs, home and community, and in the future, job support services. We plan to expand services to accommodate more individuals and provide additional services and resources. Delivering high-quality and reliable services are the hallmarks of ACF. As we grow, we will continue to focus on optimizing each individual's strengths by providing needed resources in a caring and compassionate environment. We are grateful for the ability to present a $5,000 check to this outstanding organization's founders, Linda and Frank Cooper.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm John Bishop. I'm also a committee member. We're going to introduce one, another group that we're honoring tonight, and that's the Council Rock Coalition for Healthy Youth. And from their website, we found that the Council Rock Coalition for Healthy Youth is a group of concerned community members whose mission is to mobilize and engage all sectors of our communities to work together to reduce risk behaviors of our youth, helping them to reach their full potential in a healthy environment. They have been serving the Council Rock School District and the neighboring communities for over 25 years. The coalition partners with many groups in the community to achieve this end: healthcare, schools, parents, volunteer organizations, youth organizations such as SAD chapters, faith-based institutions, government, law enforcement, business, and the media. Both youth and parents are served by the coalition's initiatives.
The last organization is probably not as well-known as the Coalition and Autism Cares, and that is Able Force Employment and Education. Our mission at Able Force Employment is to provide employment for adults with special needs. As many of you know, once, once children get to be 21, they're not, they're out of school. And what Able Force has been able to do in an unbelievable way is to create training for a lot of these people who've aged out of school, a couple of which have already gone on to, I hate to say the word regular, but regular, full-time employment, because they have progressed so well with the training they've received. So, Council Rock Auto Detail, which is across the street from the old Wawa, there are three adults with special needs doing car and SUV detailing. Able Force Fulfillment, there are another five special needs adults who work in, in fulfillment. Then there is Requip. This company is amazing, takes broken hockey sticks and turns them into all kinds of furniture, putters, barbecue sets, you name it, they make them. And the last company is Shredable. Shredable provides training and opportunities who need a little bit of help while they're doing it, but that's five more special needs adults who are earning a paycheck through Able Force. The other side of the mission is to provide education and nurturing toward fitness, educational experiences, fostering personal, social, vocational growth, ensuring that every, every individual reaches their fullest potential. They also work with the Achieve Program Council Rock. So they do good work. As you've heard tonight, two of the three organizations, we spoke specifically about older special needs. It's an underserved area, and these people are doing an unbelievable job. I'll also mention that Mike Fitzgerald from Able Force and his Sean Son, Mike was a founding member of the Miracle League also. So he's got a long history of working in this area. So what I'd like to do now is have Scott come up and present the checks to Linda and Frank, to Debbie, and Mike and Sean. Scott, hand out those checks, Scott. Can we have you guys step back closer to the dais and get everybody in?
Sure. Thank you so much. You're the photographers for the night.
Oops, sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry.
We're here to support.
Here's one right here.
Of course.
I won't give you my camera.
Is this one yours?
Yes.
That's what I just said.
work you do. You provide our community with a great day of fun and events, but you took it to the next level tonight, and you do this every year, and you should really be proud of that. It's really a huge gift. Yeah. Thank you very much. Is there any public comment? Anyone signed up? Okay, we'll move right along to consent items, and we'll start with Paula with the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no objections, I request the minutes from 11/14, November 14, and November 20 be approved by unanimous consent.
Thank you, Paula. Counts payable. Kim?
Yes, I have the bills list for December 11th, 2024, total off funds, $1,526,945.2.
Thank you. I have just two other quick items to go over. The first one is authorization of a planning module submission. This is for Trinity Realty, and this is the Bridgestone Drive Land Development. And also, we have authorization for the Township Administration to sell some surplus equipment that Public Works has identified. I take a motion for accepting the consent items as presented.
I'll second that.
So moved. So moved. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. First thing we have on our agenda is preliminary and final land development plan for 215 railroad drive. Barry?
Yeah, thank you. Will the applicant please come up to the table, introduce themselves?
I'm Stan Walka, a professional engineer with cruise surveying that prepared the plan.
Good. Okay, very good. This, this plan is called the Flood Land Development. Immediately when I first saw it, I thought, what does it do with flooding? But that's, I guess that's a gentleman's name.
Yes, that's the owner's name.
That's the owner's name of the LLC, so that's all good. So this is a site in our Business Development Park where we're adding additional structure to a building. It's an addition, 7,500 square foot building to an existing structure. And it's all, you've been to the various committees with the planning commission, zoning, everything else. And so everything's in order. So what I'd like to do, if I could, is make a motion to proceed.
Please.
Yeah, so I move for preliminary final approval of the Flood Land Development, SLD 24-2, subject to compliance with the Township Engineers Review Letter dated October 21st, 2024, and Township Traffic Engineers Review Letter dated October 21st, 2024. It is also recommended that the requested waivers be granted, approved with subject to the following conditions. So I'd like to read the conditions that it'll be subject to. The applicant shall enter into a land development agreement, an ESCO agreement, in a form acceptable to the Township Solicitor and Engineer. This shall include a stormwater management, maintenance, and operations agreement. Okay? A park and recreation impact fee in the amount of $13,0983 is required. This fee shall be payable for the terms of the land development agreement.
Agreed.
Okay? A fee in lieu of sidewalks is required in the amount of $8,971, as calculated by the Township Engineer. The fee shall be payable per the terms of the land development agreement.
Agreed.
Okay? And the applicant is responsible for obtaining any outside approvals that may be necessary, including but not limited to DEP, the Conservation District, PENDOT, and the Municipal Authority. Further approvals granted for submission of any other documents that may be required as part of the sewage facilities planning process.
Agreed.
So you agree to all those conditions?
Yes.
That's good. So I'd like to say that I think that I support this concept. I think it's very good. I'm pleased with the fact that in our Business Development Center, that we have people expanding their businesses. I understand, I guess they're in the business of HVAC manufacturing.
Yes, various supplies, yes.
Yeah, so it'll be creating jobs and things like that for the, our township, which is very good.
Can I just do a poll more? Can I get a second on the motion so we can go through the discussion?
I'll give it a second.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, I, anyway, I've gone through all the documentation. You've gone through the proper process, and I support this fully in the sense that I think it's very good that we're expanding this building in this area. It's going to create more jobs and, you know, makes a better area for our community. So, you know, I would recommend it.
Thanks. Does anybody else have any other comments? Township engineer, anything to add?
I just wanted to note that within our letter, we did have a comment that one of the waivers requests is actually not required, and our letter does reflect that, and that's regarding the ADA parking spaces. So that relief for that section isn't required.
You acknowledge that?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. Any other? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming. Congratulations. Look forward to the new building. Next, we have preliminary and final land development for 66 Richard Road. Barry?
Sure. Gentlemen, if you please come up and introduce yourselves. Bill, do we have that plan up on the screen, please?
Yeah, we need the one.
Yeah, we have it on the screen, sir, so that's good. So this pertains to a property on Richard Road in the Business Development Center. They're proposing making a 10,900 square foot addition to an existing 12,150 square foot building. If you could please introduce yourselves, gentlemen.
Scott Swiger with C2C Design Group in Marzville, PA, with the owner of the property, Anthony Genesio.
Oh, good, okay. So like the previous applicant, this applicant's gone through all the necessary requirements and approvals through all the various committees, and it's gotten approved by everything. There's a number, a couple waivers I'd like to request. What was the general business that you're expanding the business for?
It's HVAC.
HVAC.
Yeah, we manufacture sheet metal ductwork.
Okay, very good.
Industrial.
Good, okay, good. Adam, if I can make a motion?
Please.
Okay. I move for preliminary final approval of the 66 Richard Road Land Development, SLD 23-5, subject to compliance with the Township Engineers Review Letter dated November 4th, 2024, and the Township Traffic Engineers Review Letter dated November 4th, 2024. It is also recommended that the requested waivers be granted, approved with subject to the following conditions. The applicant shall enter into a land development agreement, an ESCO agreement, in a form acceptable to the Township Solicitor and Engineer. This shall include a stormwater management, maintenance, and operations agreement. Okay? A park and recreation impact fee in the amount of $20,322 is required. The fee shall be payable per the terms of the land development agreement.
Okay.
Okay? A fee in lieu of sidewalks is required in the amount of $9,627, as calculated by the Township Engineer. The fee shall be payable per the terms of the land development agreement.
Okay.
The last point is that the applicant is responsible for obtaining any outside approvals that may be necessary, including but not limited to DEP, the Conservation District, PENDOT, the Municipal Authority. Further approvals granted for the submission of any documentation that must be required as part of the sewage facilities planning.
I accept.
Okay?
One second.
Second.
Any discussion, Barry?
No, I've gone through the plan again, and once, once again, this, the applicant has gone through the proper procedures here, and I would recommend this, we proceed with this. This is a existing 12,000 square foot building. We're adding a 10,900 square foot addition to it. The lot size is slightly bigger, it's 2.37 acres, but once again, it's adding to our Business and Technology Center, so I support it.
I was getting the microphone.
You lost my, okay.
I wasn't on. Fortunately, I'm loud enough. Any other comments? No. Engineer?
Similarly, regarding the waiver requests, there are two waiver requests that we had originally noted in our letter that we did not support. However, in speaking with the applicant, they have agreed to revise the plan in accordance with our comments in our review letter. So I would recommend granting all of those waivers, again contingent upon compliance with our review letter.
You guys agree to that?
Yes.
Very good, thanks. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, congratulations.
Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you for adding to the community, sir.
Very good.
Yeah.
Next, we have authorization to advertise a zoning ordinance amendment to village overlay district supplemental regulations. Barry?
Sure, thanks, Adam. So this is an announcement of a public meeting to be held in February of 2025. The ordinance is entitled the Blighted Waterfront Redevelopment Area. It's interesting because it uses the word waterfront, and it's really just the creek. We're talking about the property on the Mill Race in Holland, and we're getting very close to getting that property finally developed and approved with a combination of office and condominiums. So this is just announcing the, the public hearing that will happen in February. So if I can make a motion, Adam?
Please.
So I move to authorize advertisement of a public hearing for February 26th, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Township Building to consider an amendment to the Northampton Township zoning ordinance, specifically Chapter 27, for the purpose of creating the blighted waterfront redevelopment area.
I'll second it.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Very good.
Barry? Next, we have an authorization to advertise a multi-way stop at Grenoble and Spencer Roads. Bob?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you stated, this relates to advertisement of a public meeting related to the addition of stop signs at both the northbound and southbound approaches of Spencer Road at its intersection with Grenoble Road. If I may make a motion?
Please.
I move for advertisement of a public meeting on January 22nd, 2025, at 7:00 PM at the Township Building to consider an ordinance amending the Northampton Township Code, specifically Chapter 15, Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Part 2, for the purpose of adding stop intersections on both the northbound and southbound approaches of Spencer Road at its intersection with Grenoble Road.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion from anybody?
No, I'll just add that this is another example of this board acting to make our streets and roads safer for people. And I think it's a great example, and this is actually near a preschool, so it's very good to slow down traffic, which is good.
Yes, less accidents, the better.
What's that? We've heard from folks on Spencer Road.
Yeah, so it's, it's going to be very good, yeah.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, Bob, again, consider resolutions 2411, 13, and 14 for grant applications for a trail extension.
Thank you. This relates to a recommendation that we seek funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development statewide local share account for three projects. The program funds 100% of the construction cost, but requires the municipality to fund engineering, permitting, and construction inspection costs, if I may make a motion.
Please.
I move to adopt resolutions 2024, 2024 R11, R12, and R13, authorizing the Township Administration to apply to the Commonwealth statewide local share account program to fund a trail extension between Rockway and St. Leonard's Road, pedestrian safety, school crossing improvements at four intersections, and pedestrian lighting in Richborough, and to authorize the Township Manager to execute all contract documents required for this project.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
It's another public safety issue that is largely funded by the state, so.
Anyone else?
It's about time, yes.
Bring the state money to Northampton.
That's right.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Next one is a bit of a housekeeping item. We need to have a resolution to relinquish the right-of-way easement acquisition for the Richborough Roundabout Project. Kim?
Yes. The Township took eminent domain action in 2022 to acquire certain easements required for the construction of the Richborough Roundabout Project. Acquiring these easements was a condition for obtaining a PENDOT Highway Occupancy Permit that would allow the Township to proceed with construction. Shortly thereafter, PENDOT advised that the department would completely, would, would complete project construction as part of its State Transportation Improvement Plan and assume all future project costs. This included final engineering design, permitting, and 100% of the construction. The Township was recently advised that since federal dollars will be used to partially or fully fund this project, this construction project, federal regulations require PENDOT to acquire all necessary rights of way and easements, and PENDOT has asked that the Township rescind its previous eminent domain actions. PENDOT will coordinate the acquisition- PENDOT will coordinate the acquisition of all easements and right-of-way required for project construction directly with affected property owners and assume responsibility for paying just compensation for the value of any required easements or right-of-way. This resolution will rescind the board's previous condemnation actions in 2022 and relinquish all rights of way, temporary construction easements, and utility easements back to the property owners. With that, may I make a, a motion?
Please.
I move to approve resolutions R-24-14, R-24-15, R-24-16, and R-24-17, relinquishing all easements and rights of way acquired through the eminent domain in 2022 for the Richborough Roundabout Project.
Is there a second?
Great, I'm happy about that. I can't wait.
Is that a second? Your second?
Yeah.
She's seconding it.
That's a second. Thank you. Any further comment?
No.
Anything else to add? The only thing I just wanted to add is when Kim talked about eminent domain and condemnation, that was all done with cooperation from the landowners. It was, it was a friendly condemnation. They're big words that can sound scary, but it was done with, with those landowners, and they were okay with it.
Yeah.
Thanks. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Last on the agenda there is final approval of the 2025 preliminary budget. Paula?
Okay, the proposed 2025 budget was advertised for public inspection. That was on Thursday, November 15 of this year, following the adoption of the preliminary budget on November 14. A copy of the budget has been available in the Township Administration Building and on the township website since November 15 of 2024. The administration has not received any public input on the proposed budget, and no one visited the administration building to review this document. The preliminary budget is ready for final adoption unless the board has any changes. Okay, the preliminary budget is going to be a final budget for 2025, and can I make a motion?
Please.
Okay, I move for the final adoption of the 2025 preliminary budget, and if there's any questions, you can call Bob Pellegrino.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Julie Norrisi and Bob Pellegrino and all the financial staff for this budget report. I know it was lengthy and detailed budget, and I'm proud with all the results, and I know we're very careful in calculating with our township spending. I want to make sure people realize that. And we have a lot to look forward to for this year, and I am so relieved it's not a GASP'er budget.
Any other comments?
I just want to say that I think that we are keeping with the, we're keeping all our services, and we are keeping this as lean as possible. I just want to thank Bob and everybody. You did a great job on this, and we're working to keep it going.
Thank you. Bob?
I gave my thoughts on the budget at the last meeting. I will say, I think it's a shame that not a single township resident came to see the budget. I'm sure some may comment on it at some point, but as I said last month, I think the staff did a great job, and I wholeheartedly approve it.
Thanks. Barry?
Yeah, once again, I commend the Township Administration, Bob and the staff and everybody else for doing an outstanding job, and I'll be honest, you talk around, walk around the township like we all do. People are very happy in this township. They're very thrilled. The quality of service is extremely high, very safe, so, yeah, it's great. And I think, to be honest, if it's signed and nobody showed up, demonstrates the confidence people have in this board.
I hope.
They trust us.
I echo my fellow board members. This budget was carefully prepared. Thank you to the staff. I mean, there's, it's months of preparation to make sure that this budget works, that it's, that it's fair and lean, and it also shows that we, as a board, have fulfilled our obligations to the community that has asked us to lead, you know, this, this board, and it does that quite well. With that, I'll ask all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next up, our liaison reports. Kim?
Yes. First, I have the Senior Center. Our billiard-loving members were giving, were given a treat on December 2nd when Steve "The Blue Shark" Markle visited to entertain us with his trick shot show. Steve is the 2023 U.S. National Trick Shot Champion and a World Championship semifinalist. Check out Steve's tricks on his YouTube channel. Then last Friday, December 6, the Senior Center hosted its annual holiday marketplace. Shoppers were delighted with 47 tables of holiday gifts from about 40 different vendors. The vendors enjoyed showing their jewelry, pottery, Christmas decor, ornaments, candles, woodworking, crocheted stuffed animals, and so much more. It was a fun evening to kick off the holiday shopping season, and I didn't overspend this year. That's what I'm, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it. The Senior Center is looking forward to our holiday luncheon at the Northampton Valley Country Club on December 18. Over 100 of us will enjoy great food and live music to celebrate the holidays together. Finally, Senior Center members wish to extend their gratitude to the members who have already shown their generosity by donating almost $3,000 to the Senior Center on Giving Tuesday. Enjoy your family and friends this holiday season. And now Parks and Rec. The new winter brochure just hit mailboxes this week. Along with many programs and events, our 2025 summer camp information is included. In addition to our popular elementary and middle school camps, we are also excited to announce the return of Little Discoverers, the half-day preschool camp for potty-trained children ages 3 to 5 who have not yet completed kindergarten. Camp will open for residents only on January 4th, 2025. Now, in addition to the 2025-26 Northampton Township state-certified preschool registration information, it can be found in the winter brochure. To prepare pre-kindergarten students for Council Rock Schools District Full Day Kindergarten Program, Northampton Township Preschool will be offering a full-day pre-K class for the first time. Registration will be open for students on January 3rd, 2025. Kristen, our special events coordinator, who does an excellent job, is busy wrapping up the year with the Cookies and Claws event, which will take place this Friday evening, December 13. Children will listen to a story read by Mrs. Claus herself, take pictures with Santa, and sip hot cocoa while they decorate cookies for the season. Limited openings are still available. Now, due to popular demand, after a sold-out trip to Winterthur Museum, Garden, and Library in Newark, Delaware, a second trip was scheduled for next Tuesday, December 7. Limited seats are still available. And I just would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy Holidays to everyone. Safe and healthy season.
Thank you, Kim. Next, Paula?
Okay, the library did not have a meeting, so I do not have any information or any liaison report. I do want to talk about the Veterans Advisory Commission. We do need some board positions filled with the Vet, the Vet Department, so they can join the committee. And if you have any questions, you can contact Lisa Russo at Northampton Township. Okay. And Representative Kristen Marcel is working on reviving, resolving and reviving current requirements for veterans that need a discount, that they are work, they are definitely entitled to a discount on their real estate tax. So she's working on making that more concrete for the veterans. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Bob?
No reports. I'll just say Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, or whatever else it is that you celebrate. I think the township had a great year. Thanks to all of you sitting up here, and also to Ms. Russo sitting out there, and all the people behind the scenes who don't get the credit they deserve. Let's do it again next year. See you in January.
Thank you, Bob. Barry?
Good. I just have two items. One is that the RFP that was issued by the Bucks County, Bucks County Development Authority, redevelopment authority for the police building will be open on Friday, this Friday, the 13th. So the Bucks County redevelopment authority, we announced at prior meetings that we sent out a proposal to people to bid on acquiring the old police building, and we're going to be getting all those proposals in this Friday, and we'll be discussing them next week. And of course, it'll be done in a public meeting in January. We'll discuss it with everybody. The other items, item I want to mention is that the Rails of Trails, I know a lot of people mentioned that on East Elm, the SEPTA has gone there and taken all the rails up and all the ties. The, that Rails of Trails project going from Bristol Road to the Churchill Nature Center, that will be, bits be going out in the first quarter of 2025, and then the construction will start in June of 2025. So we'll have construction going from Bristol Road all the way up to the Nature Center, so that should be very good. And then one minor thing before the planning commission is on 27 Ammazous Road, there's a small little piece of land there that was an old stone building there years ago that actually caught in fire and burned down. That property is finally being developed, and that'll be about, I believe it's a 2,000 square foot building on that site, and that's before planning. We'll probably see that here in January for that time. And once again, I'd like to, as everybody else has mentioned, Happy Holidays to all the, our residents, and, you know, be safe and have fun. Enjoy it.
Thanks, Barry. A few things from me. I have a message from our police chief, Chief LaCombe. There have been a number of car break-ins in the township, unfortunately, with the concentration of them in the Holland area. There have been seven incidents where cars have been burglarized, totaling thousands of dollars in losses. Additionally to that, there's been four or five other cars that were broken into. Nothing was taken, but the cars were kind of rifled through and messed up. Lock your cars, lock your doors, don't keep any valuables in them, and stay vigilant on the lookout in your, in your neighborhoods. Additionally, the chief asked that I mention, this is a vulnerable time of the year for scams. You've been hearing a lot about scams over the internet, email, phone, social media. These are all ways that a scammer can trick you. He says, remind everyone, do not provide any information without being certain. If you're unsure or believe you may have been a victim, contact the Northampton Police Non-Emergency Number, 3215-357-8700. They will help you. They're very good at this. They know what to do. Don't hesitate to call. I, we have the number up on the screen right now. Please make that call. It could save you a lot of money and protect your assets. This week, Saturday was Santa at the Firehouse. It's Station 3 in Richborough on Saturday, 10 to 2. This is a free community event put on by the Fire Department. Please come. There's a lot of activities, opportunity to have your picture with Santa himself, and snacks, and just a good time to, to see the fire trucks as well. And lastly, the county burn ban expired today. What that means is that fire pits, chimeneas, those kind of backyard activities, as well as the luminaries, the candles that are put out at the curbs at this time of the year, they're all permitted. We just ask that, especially with any open flames, all three of those, fire pits, chimeneas, and the, and the luminary candles, be really careful with open flames. Make sure they're secure. If you watch the township website in the next day or so, you'll see some good safety tips on how to do the luminaries properly. We really suggest using the battery-operated candles. They put off just as much light, and there's no open flame. And I said finally, but it wasn't finally. I had one more thing. The Fire Department received a grant recently from the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission to install emergency vehicle warning devices in five of our trucks, and what that means is when, when the Northampton trucks are going to a call, if you have a later-model phone or car, you'll actually get a warning in your car. It'll come up on your screen or your phone that says there's emergency traffic coming your way. So that, it is, it's a three-year grant for us, and they paid the whole 100% with no matching funds from us. So again, another opportunity to get a grant into the township. Finally, really finally, Happy Holidays to everyone. I think we've had a wonderful year. I echo the sentiment, you know, we, we do, we do some work, but Bob, Bill, Lisa, the whole team that runs the township really is what makes this whole machine go, and we'd really be lost without them pushing things along. And just, I thank the public for your trust in us up here. Every year, we, we don't take that for granted, and we want to be, we're really serious about the work that we do. So Happy New Year to everyone as well.
Thank you.
With that, managers' report. Bob?
Just a Happy Holidays to everyone. I would, following up Pauline, the chairman's comments, say we appreciate the support that this board gives the administration. You acknowledge the work that we do, but we could not do it without your support, so that is very much appreciated.
Thanks, Bob. Assistant managers' report. Bill?
Good evening. I echo Mr. Pellegrino's comments about the support from the board. It's, I've worked in a few municipalities, and this is by far the best one I've ever worked in, and we are the, you know, the crown jewel in, in what we do, and it's all based on your leadership. Thank you. Two quick items. One is to piggyback on the comment about the luminary article that's going to be posted on our website. Just a reminder that communities suggested to sign up for email notifications. You can go to our website, and atop, there's a link where you can add your, your email address, and you'll get notifications about everything that's posted in our news column whenever that goes out. Secondly, the community may have seen work has begun on the renovations of the basketball courts at Municipal Park, or the Blue Park, as some may know. The work there will be to redo the surfaces. Two of the basketball courts will be transitioned into six pickleball courts. So in next year, in the spring, early summer, you should be able to see those improvements at that park, and pickleball's finally coming permanently to Northampton. That's all I have tonight. Happy Holidays.
Thank you, Bill. Solicitors' report. Mr. Peizo?
No report, other than to thank you all for the opportunity to have been of service to all of you again this year, and I very much appreciate it and very much enjoy working with your very capable staff and administrators, and just wanted to wish all of you a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays to all of you and to the community you represent. Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Joe. Engineers' report. Amanda?
And a similar sentiment. I'd just like to thank the board and all the township staff for another wonderful year. This township is a very well-run operation, and so I'm proud to be able to serve the board, the staff, and all the residents, and also echo the sentiments. Happy Holidays and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I don't believe there are any public comments with that. The meeting is adjourned for our final meeting of the year. Happy New Year, everyone.
Yay.
[applause][1789.82]